Welcome to the Tuesday, December 10th, 2024 Planning Commission Working Session Meeting. For detailed information on tonight's topics, please review the full meeting agenda. Our first item on the agenda is public comment. This is an opportunity for individuals to speak for up to three minutes on any item. To speak, press star nine on your phone or use the raise hand feature in Zoom. For phone access, call 877-853-5247 and our meeting ID 977-6634-1226. City staff will identify callers by the last digit of their phone number or by name. You will hear an announcement when it's your turn to speak. Please move to a quiet area and mute any background noise. Please state your name and address at the beginning of your comments. Is there anybody who has indicated that they would like to address the commission at this time?
Currently, there are no hands raised.
Okay, I believe we have another opportunity for public comment at the end as well. Our first agenda item is a discussion on commission feedback to city council's policy agenda. Mick Scully, are you taking the introduction on this one? Or do I need to read anything else?
Oh, I certainly can. So the plan, I'm sorry, the planning commission is one of many boards and commissions who the city council is seeking feedback from for something that they do periodically, which is create a policy agenda. It is broader than just a legislative policy agenda, although legislative policy and advocacy for state or federal rulemaking is certainly part of it. But it also has, if you look at the latest approved version, which is attached in the meeting packet for tonight, you can see that there's a second portion which has priorities by service areas, sometimes by different departments. So the purpose of putting it on to your radar this evening is to generate discussion, but it will not be the last time that you see it because we do need to have you all forward a formal resolution to the council on this topic. And the earliest that we can do that, your next action taking meeting, your next regular session is January 7th. So we could, that's all I have to say by way of introduction, but we are here as a resource to talk through any topics which might be of interest. And I think anything that you all think is relevant is on the table.
Okay, thanks. And just for my own clarity, what was attached was the last one that we adopted. So it's not like this is what's proposed going forward. These are just to like refresh our, right? So this is not automatically translating over. It's like a launching point.
It's an example of, and the current copy of what is presently adopted. And it looks like it was from 2023. So there are a series of high priority policy goals. I'll just share a screen just for, for everybody while they're getting a chance to maybe pull up their packet documents. So let's see. Do folks see my screen? Does it say City of Ann Arbor Policy Agenda? Okay. And I also see the manager winner has its hand raised. If you'd like to share something?
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight that we did receive a communication on this item late this afternoon that I just forwarded to commissioners. I can highlight it that the comment is recommending removal of the specific language for inclusionary zoning as a policy position of the city or for the planning commission to recommend that. I think it's been a while since we've done this, but I do want to sort of revisit. We've had this conversation in the past. Inclusionary zoning can take a lot of different forms, but it's, to oversimplify it, it is often regulated in communities outside of Michigan where for every X number of housing units that are built, some proportion of them need to be provided as affordable housing. I personally think that it is an imperfect model for affordable housing goals for a couple of reasons. One, when we add that requirement to all housing, it can have the impact of adding to the cost of any housing when we're adding that cost to it. And two, particularly when we are trying to, I'm going to say shoehorn affordable units into every residential project or a great category of residential projects. Our experience with those units is that they can be quite challenging in the city. That is, when you don't have mission-based housing operators, specifically mission-based affordable housing operators, it can be quite challenging to be successful in the targeting households, verifying rents and the like of, of basically private actors that are really good at providing market rate housing, and that's not an expertise or a philosophy that they bring. So I brought this up in the past to pass planning commissions, also advocating similarly to the comments you received that we don't push for inclusionary zoning in the state of Michigan. In the past, I want to be explicit, the planning commission has always been of the mind yet that, yeah, those are issues, but it's better to have more tools than less tools. So that was a long-winded way of saying, I wanted to make sure you saw an email from a commenter before your discussion.
Thank you. Does anybody want to kick off a discussion with thoughts? Commissioner Adams?
Yeah, might as well just jump in. I saw the note, the communication on inclusionary zoning, and I was already typing something up on it. I think we ought to strike that or recommend striking it or whatever, whatever our posture is here. I was saying at the outset that I don't think that any of these is sort of cost free. So, you know, going off of what Brett just said, I think that we ought to spend our capital or recommend that the city spend its capital wisely. So if we, if it's just about having another tool in the toolbox, I think it's incumbent on us to ask the question of whether we think the tool is valuable or not. I think our own experience with premiums tells us that it's not, that these things are hard to execute in a way that's workable, they're hard to calibrate to what the market requires. I think it also gets the problem backwards. I don't think, I think, I think inclusionary zoning is a misnomer. Inclusionary zoning is zoning that allows us to build, the market to build the housing that we need to build. And the only reason it works in the communities it works in is because they have a shortage that compels developers to accept the bargain. It's sort of a tax on the thing that we want, and we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be making it harder for the market to do what we want it to do. It's also contrary, I think, flatly contrary to the economic development resolutions and the, the report that was adopted in whole by those resolutions, which calls for the expansion of housing supply at all levels and the simplification and streamlining of the permitting process. If we're going to lobby for changes, I think we ought to be lobbying for making that permitting process as fast and efficient as possible, to the extent that staff finds themselves boxed in by, you know, the Michigan Zone Zoning Enabling Act or similar requirements at the state level, we ought to be lobbying to get some of those, some of those burdens lifted so that we can streamline our code in a way that we think is appropriate. To me, that's inclusionary zoning, and I will stop talking now.
Other thoughts? Commissioner Mills?
Thanks. I think the two things that come up most commonly when we're talking, well, in addition to thinking about affordability, which I agree with what Commissioner Adams just had to say, the two things that come up most commonly are the building codes and policies that don't facilitate electrification. And actually, I'm kind of shocked that that didn't make it into the last policy agenda at all. I was trying to look for it and the places, if we might recommend it, like under local control on page three, that's where building codes and the idea that like we are constrained from being able, from, we are held to the state, building an electrical, electrical code and can't require something more stringent is a preemption issue, honestly. And so that's where it could appear, or we could put it, and I think the electrification part could be an infrastructure. If, I don't know the extent to which you want exact language, but like, to the best of my knowledge and understanding, I'm building codes right now, the state has just or is in the process of adopting like the most recent stuff. So it's really, I think, maybe like following opportunities to strengthen building codes and facilitate electrification is kind of what I wrote down. I think that, yeah, like there's not a specific piece of legislation that I could point to or a specific policy opportunity, but I think that it, just given some of the, I would, I think that those two things, putting it on the lobbyist's agenda would, would go a long way. There's other things in like the other part of my day job that I think are in keeping with Ann Arbor's policy that I don't, you know, effectively like working for opportunities for, creating opportunities for distributed generation, like renewable energy generation is something that doesn't, it's tangentially related because we talk about sustainability a lot, but that's something else that we could put on here. And I did know, at least in terms of the climate plan, A2 zero calls for like, if we had community choice aggregation, that would solve a lot of our like, how do we decarbonize the electricity sector space? So that is specifically named, but yeah, those are my ideas.
Other thoughts? Commissioner Norton?
There are some bills going up in front of the lame duck. I'm not talking right to the, there are some bills going up before the lame duck legislature in the state house right now that are speaking to different aspects of trying to find ways to increase affordable housing. And I don't think any of them include inclusionary zoning, but they do include other measures that might be more effective. I wonder if the, we have people in town, I'm thinking of Ryan Connolly, teaches in the real estate program at the University of Michigan, is a national expert on housing affordability. We have folks in town who are really strong experts in this area. Maybe we could ask them come and make a presentation on this topic to the planning commissioner or somebody and outline it. My inclination is to think that mandating or inclusionary zoning is not the way to go. There are other ways to do it. I think our efforts to try and open the door to allow much more housing in the city are probably going to be more fruitful. That's where we should put our attention. So I wouldn't, I'm not feeling overly strong about this, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't object to a recommendation to strike that from the policy platform. That was a convoluted way of saying, I kind of agree with Commissioner Adams and Mills on it's not a prudent thing to pursue.
Thank you. And can I just ask like a process question here as we're having this discussion? So like, looking back on what we had, I guess FY23, does that mean last, last year? The fiscal year thing kind of confused me.
Yeah, this policy was last adopted, I think in late '22 for the fiscal year '23.
So it's a couple of years old.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't, I think it's every other year kind of, or it, or it just didn't happen last year. I'm not sure which.
Yeah, I can't remember. It doesn't seem like two years ago, but so, you know, it says in here, like, these issues have been deemed likely to see movement in the public policy forecast. Is there a way to get an update? I'm not like really on top of everything that the state legislature does all the time. Like, is there a way that like, did they gain movement? Is it even worth, are any of those on here before we just talk about like striking or like, are any of them still relevant? Are there new things, deal of land use that we should be, you know, really strongly advocating for? I do agree with the electrification for sure. I'd love to see that in here somewhere or something that, that we push, but I just don't even know what the legislature is like looking at. And since this document is a couple of years old, I would hope that something has happened. Could be wrong.
Yeah, we can find out. I presume that our lobbyists are providing some sort of status update to the, to the city council and probably particularly the policy subcommittee of council. They're sort of gathering all this feedback. So we can, I haven't seen that report, but, but we can follow up to see if that's something that we can, again, this is super helpful. What this allows us to do is sort of make some proposed changes, highlights, present it back to you. And at the same time, if that, if that status update exists, we'll share that at that time as well.
Great. Other feedback?
And if I could just go, the building, the building code question. So you talked about a couple of things. I agree, we, we talk about electrification, sustainability quite a lot. Does the planning commission have a particular angle or any tools as beneficial? That is, one would be just advocacy for local modification of building codes. The other one might be what building codes that the state does adopt. I presume when I'm hearing that from you, you're sort of ambivalent about each, either of those. So as long as the goal is to get to a code that required or can require these measures instead of, I think right now, the code that's being looked at is, it would be an optional way to measure it, but it's not going to be required. Am I hearing that correctly? Or is there more interest in like, no, we want to do our own city building code? Sounds scary.
I, can I jump in?
Yeah.
I intentionally left that vague because I haven't followed this in a year to know. A year and a half ago, there was a lot of talk about the zero code, which was an appendix that if it got adopted, part of the building code would allow local governments to optionally exceed building code. So that's cool. I mean, the other thing is just like raising all the boats. Like, we regularly run into this, right? Like, if we, there's some benefits of having, I mean, we want to do more. And if we do too much more than our neighbors and we push people to the townships like for a climate plan, right? And so if there's way, that's why I said strengthen, because that allows us, if we lift all the boats, that's helpful for climate and, right? Like, but yeah, I don't think this is like us doing our own thing, but again, I, we could put that, yeah, that, that appendix thing, if that's still on the, on the table, which again, I just don't know. And I think it was called the zero code or something. You know what I'm talking about. Like that, super, like both of those are options to like strengthen building codes, facilitate electrification, all of those kinds of things.
Commissioner Norton?
Yeah, I was just going to follow up and say that I know the Michigan Association of Planning has been working with MML and MTA, done a ton of work on affordable housing issues in the state and have put forward a lot of ideas and done a lot of study. And it might be a good time to, to ask for some resources from them. I don't, I know Brett, you've been, you're active with MAP, but there's a lot of stuff out there that could be helpful to the city and it's a hot topic. And let's take advantage of it, would be my sense and kind of help it to educate both the planning commission and the city council.
We can, that's, those are going to be great resources we could bring in January as well.
Any other thoughts for now? It sounds like we will have another opportunity to comment in January.
I think our next topic might delve into some of these issues.
I think so too.
Building code, I, I don't know if there's anyone in this group who's very enthusiastic about the single staircase issue, or if that's something that is, has been brought up before, but it is something that we hear about with buildings of a certain height mandating to stairwell for egress and emergency access, whereas a lot of the developed world does not have the same requirement and has also similar fire risks. So I don't know where that debate stands in Michigan or if that's of interest, but it is something that was, has been brought up in public comment and in, at least in my time, I know that it has been brought up in passing by some commissioners.
I have heard a lot about that recently as well. Commissioner Mills?
I was just going to say, if we are thinking about like, who else we might consult, I assume that the different departments have been consulted and I meant to reach out to OSI before this, but like, what do they see as the, I mean, these are the ones that come to us as like barriers, but I don't know what the other barriers are. And so, so long as that's, you know, part of the step, then cool.
Yeah, a hundred percent. To be clear, part of the city council's regular routine is to ask all the boards and commissions, so all those that OSI are probably the Energy Commission, the Environmental Commission, you know, Public Works, everybody's being posed that question. So you don't, I don't want you to feel like you need to answer comprehensively for the entirety of the city. It's more about the issues that are apropos to the planning.
Anyone else have comments? Okay. Brett, do you think you have enough to move forward with whatever you're going to put together for us for January?
Brett, yes, I think Hank has enough to move forward.
Oh. Just passing the buck. The special guest is talking an awful lot. We're so happy to have you.
As our sitting council member, do you have anything to add to this discussion? Councilmember Dish? I don't know if you're on that subcommittee. Okay. I'm promoting our guests, but Jennifer, you are already promoted. If you'd like to come on screen, you're welcome.
Great segue into our next topic of discussion, agenda item 3B, and the discussion on affordable housing development with the Ann Arbor Housing Commission. So they're going to give an overview on different aspects of affordable housing focused on the low income housing tax credits and features of using and competing for this funding. So we have Jennifer Hall, the Housing Director's Executive Director and consultants from Grafton Hills Consulting, DMC Real Estate Services Consulting to provide a presentation and answer some of our questions to help us better understand how state financing rules impact development features such as parking and utilities and influence the development details of these projects, which is really great for us to learn about. So Mick Scully, do you have anything else to say? Or should we just turn it over to our guests?
Holly, to confirm that Lori guest is Lori Harris, and I think, I think so. I don't have anything further, just making sure I promoted the right people.
All right, Ms. Holly can take it away whenever you're ready.
Great, thank you. I am going to try to share my screen. Are you seeing my note screen or you're seeing just my slide deck?
We're seeing your notes too.
All right, I need to swap these. Okay, now are you seeing my notes?
Nope. Should be good.
Okay, great. I'm going to be looking to my left, so I apologize, I'm not looking forward now. I would like to start out by introducing the folks that are going to be talking to you tonight. My name is Jennifer Hall. I'm the Executive Director of the Ann Arbor Housing Commission, and I've done quite a few developments now all in the city of Ann Arbor. We're on our fourth new construction project. We've got several more in the pipeline. And I invited Lori Harris with Grafton Hills Consulting to join us. She actually was on the development team. She was the developer we hired to do all of our development of our old public housing site. And she's done development all over, not in every state, but all over the country. So she has a lot of experience doing affordable housing and working in lots of different communities, a lot of different states. And so she's here to add that perspective of what's happening in other locations. And Darren McKinnon with DMC Real Estate Services Consulting, he has worked for a very long time in the city of Ann Arbor and in other locations. And he's currently a consultant to the Ann Arbor Housing Commission on the new construction projects that we are doing right now. He has a civil engineer background degree and has a lot of, I think if there's questions and any insights that he can offer on literally the physical development part of doing development, and Lori is our expert on the finance. And so the three of us hopefully can answer all of your questions. And I just wanted to share that I was asked by the planning commission staff to provide information to the planning commission about how housing development works. So I'm going to talk about what it, what it is, how is it similar or different from market rate developments? We're going to talk about the single biggest source of financing, which if you looked at the slide deck already, is low income housing tax credits. We're not actually going to go into detail on, you know, all the regulatory stuff. It's just there as a FYI. But the reason that we want to talk about it at all is because, because it is driving what happens in the affordable housing development world as the biggest source of financing. And so it is important to understand from a big picture how it impacts the developers who come before you, who are using tax credits as their, as a financing source. So I will start off and also wanted to say that we work a lot with the planning commission staff, obviously with the various projects, both what you see and behind the scenes. I mean, it's a hand in hand process. So I really appreciate the expertise that they bring and the difficulty in juggling all the different demands of community members, planning commission, developers, city council. So I appreciate the opportunity they are giving us to make the presentation tonight. I thank you. All right, let me keep going here and we will try to go as quickly through the slides as possible so that we have time for questions. So you may have seen this definition of affordable housing before, but I think it's worthwhile spending a few minutes talking about it because affordability, there's a regulatory frame that's generally accepted nationally, particularly for HUD programs, that says that the goal is to pay no more than 30% of your gross household income on housing. However, you'll note the word aspirational in my definition because it is aspirational. The definite, what's affordable to me and what's affordable to somebody else with a higher or lower income is very different. And I like to think about it when I graduated from college and had a very low income and paying 30% of my income did not leave enough money left over to pay for all my other expenses, you know, food, transportation, et cetera. And that was before I had kids. But now that I'm older and own my own house and I make a lot more income, I could easily pay half my income on my housing costs and it would have a negligible impact on my ability to pay my bills. And I'm sure we've all been in that situation where we've had different incomes over time. And it doesn't matter if you're a renter, owner, co-op, the definition's the same. And what I think is important to take away from this is any, like, I heard you guys talking about inclusionary zoning and I support what Brett said about, I, I used to believe in inclusionary zoning very strongly until I've had to work with developers and planning staff in the county on administering it. And I'm like, wow, that was not, that wasn't very well thought out and I'm not such a big proponent anymore. But when you see developers who are providing affordable housing, whether it's through zoning or whether it's because it's a tax credit deal, they are simply making below market cost housing. They are not, none of us are providing housing that's affordable to folks that, to the point where they only pay 30% of their income. It cannot be guaranteed unless someone has a rental subsidy. So a lot of times you see tax credit properties that pair and invite and welcome vouchers because it works very well with tax credit properties. And that's the only way you can guarantee that somebody pays 30% of their income on their housing costs. This is merely an illustration of how, you know, we all know housing rents and homeowner prices have increased over time in Washtenaw County in Ann Arbor, but you can see it's really increasing in the last decade or so. The increase is significantly faster than in the past. That's really the main illustration of this document. I want to just remind folks that we use area median income. You probably hear that. You probably hear that being tossed about in a lot of different ways in the community. So area median income is, uh, something that's published by HUD. And HUD publishes it for every, every state and in every, um, primary statistical area in the United States. And so Ann Arbor is the primary, uh, statistical area for Washtenaw County. And when it says Ann Arbor median income, it's actually Washtenaw County. And, um, the reason that the sixty percent AMI is highlighted is because in the city's, uh, zoning and planning, uh, items that you all have some sort of jurisdiction over, it's the Planning Commission and the Plan Department. That is the target income is sixty percent AMI, but there's other target incomes depending on what the program is. Um, it's, that's not universally, uh, a income target. And so the way that area median income is determined is they look at the, um, they look at the median income in your community, and then what HUD does is they just simply attach it to a four person household at the median income. And every other, um, data point in this table is a formula. And so people often are confused about that as well. The only real, and I, I can't say anything's real because it's like some kind of a market analysis, but to the best of their ability, the only real number is a hundred nineteen thousand five hundred. Everything else is literally a formula. And how does that compare to the United States? The United States, um, median income in twenty-four is seventy-seven thousand three hundred and ninety-seven. Just as a comparison. So if you take this chart and you're like, well, how much is thirty percent of your income that you would pay on housing or no more than? What is that? Well, this is what that chart looks like. And a lot of times when I show this in presentations, people think, holy moly, twelve hundred, fourteen hundred, sixteen hundred dollars a month in rent. That seems so high. Well, yes, because we have a very high income community. But that is the upper end of what those rent caps would be and would include utilities if it's, if it's a rental apartment. Um, one of the issues that, um, Hank asked us to talk about was utilities. I'm gonna spend a little bit of time on this because it can be extremely confusing for folks. Um, we look at utilities from two different perspectives. One is on the development side, and then the other is on the operating side. So the Housing Commission both develops our own housing as well as operates them. Um, when you are developing a property, everybody these days are getting on the bandwagon, at least in the affordable housing world, of having some kind of s- uh, sustainability, green standards, what, however you wanna look at it. Um, however, not, not everybody wants to pay for it. And so what ends up happening is you have competitions for funding. Um, very often, having some kind of sustainability features, energy efficiency, whatever, uh, the case may be, gets you some kind of points. However, everything that you commit to doing also costs additional money. And so you end up having to juggle and figure out, well, how much can I commit to and increase my cost? And, and still be able to get funded by having my points increased because it, in the tax credit world and other, um, funders, but in definitely the tax credit world, you, in Michigan, Lori can talk about what happens in other communities, you actually can lose points by having, uh, excessive costs. So if your total development costs exceed a certain amount, or the amount of uh, tax credits you need per unit exceed a certain amount, you end up losing points. So you've got completely competing and opposite pressures on the development side. Um, I'm gonna talk a little bit about the operations, and then I'm gonna have Lori talk about what's happening in, uh, New York City where they do a lot of development because, um, they actually require um, electrification, but they pay for it. So I'm gonna let her talk about that. So then what happens on the operating side is the only way to pay for utilities is with rent. And where does rent come from? It comes from the tenants. So there's no source anywhere that I've ever heard of. There's no grant. There's, there's nothing in that I've heard of, or I'm sure Lori has either, that says, uh, hey, here we'll subsidize your actual utility costs on an operating side um, because you're serving low income households. It just simply doesn't exist. Um, what happens with the Housing Commission as well as with Avalon is we do a lot of what's called permanent supportive housing. So we're serving, um, primarily homeless households, people with special needs and the very, very extremely low income households. Um, not exclusively, but, you know, we would do that, uh, where the market rate uh, developers or even ones that do affordable housing that are for-profit developers don't tend to do. And so what we do is we include all the utilities in the rent. Whereas if you look out in the marketplace, some places, uh, make the tenants pay electric, some make them pay gas, some make them pay both, some add sewer, some add water. You know, it's all different. Um, but it, but for us, we include the utilities in the rent uh, because we have a lot of our tenants who cannot get utility bills in their name. And if they can't keep pay, if they can't pay the utility bills, uh, the utilities get shut off. It impacts our, our housing, but it also uh, significantly impacts the tenants and they can lose their housing. So we just include the utilities. Uh, there's, there's a cost to that, though. We absolutely lose control over the usage that happens with our tenants. They can leave the windows open in the middle of the winter with the heat on or when the air conditioning's on. But we know that they're not gonna get the utility shut off, and we'll, we'll pay, we pay it, and it comes out of our total rent. And when you do, uh, tax credit in any really affordable housing, you have a cap on your rent. It includes utilities. And so anything that we don't pay in utilities, anything that the tenant pays in utilities, we have to reduce our rent by a, um, a for, a util- what's called a utility allowance, and we have to annually hire someone to run uh, an analysis of what the utilities cost in our community. And so it, if you don't include certain utilities in your rent, you gotta reduce your rent by that amount that you're not including. So the end of the day, it's always coming from, quote, rent, uh, from tenants. Uh, but when you have a rent subsidy, you know, it can end up getting paid for by HUD, or some combination of HUD and the tenant. All right, I'm gonna turn it over to Lori, uh, so she can talk about what is going on in New York City related to tax credits.
Sure. Um, and, and can you all hear me? I have a kinda jury rigged with my phone as well as my laptop. So I apologize if you, if there's any echo. Um, so I do live in upstate New York, and I've done a lot of work in New York, New York State. Uh, some of the other states that I work in, there's a real desire, um, you know, for communities, some communities, uh, to see new construction, um, using, um, solely, um, electric. Uh, all electric buildings. In New York State, um, our state changed, um, to an actual requirement. Um, any affordable, any affordable tax credit deals, um, whether it's tax credit or using any gap funds in New York State, um, in its new construction, it has to be an electric building. Um, but it was a hard, uh, transition there, and, um, the thing that's different about New York State is there's an entire agency that is, uh, it's called NYSERTA, New York State Energy, um, uh, uh, Development Agency. And their sole purpose is, um, to, um, to meet the state's, um, climate, uh, goals. And, um, so even when, um, I think that they started the requirement, I think about five years ago. Um, it was a hard transition, um, for, uh, properties to make the move, but, um, it wouldn't have been possible, nor would it still be possible without, you know, the capital dollars coming in, um, to assist with the front end costs. We're lucky in New York State, um, uh, th- these buildings are a great deal more efficient. Um, you, you know, and the cost, at least in the upstate area where I work, um, the buildings are pretty affordable to, um, to actually operate as, as Jennifer talked about, the utilities, um, the cost on the operating side. Um, but the burden really is on the, um, the front end, the development side. And, um, you know, similar to, uh, Michigan, not as, um, uh, penalizing as in Michigan. Um, there are cost limits, um, you know, expectations related to, um, you know, what the cost per unit is, what the use of credit per, uh, unit is. Uh, but it is way less punitive than, as Jennifer mentioned, um, in Michigan, where it really can make the difference between, um, securing, um, whether it's a nine percent tax credit award or gap funding, um, through MISHDA. But, um, but for the capital dollars, you know, some of the other states, um, that I've worked in, you know, have similar desires, but the numbers, um, typically don't, um, pencil out, um, you know, without that front end, um, uh, capital fund. So we're very lucky in New York State, uh, because it is making, you know, the, the operation side, um, um, more affordable. But, but for those, um, dollars, it just wouldn't be possible.
And I would just like to add that if you're familiar with our project that we're under construction right now on the corner of Catherine and Fourth, we did commit, what we're, I'm always remember that, don't treat the Housing Commission like we're any other developer because we are a government entity, uh, we are a part of the city, we are city staff, so we have commitments that we need to make because of what, who we are. Um, and we did install geothermal wells, which I was super excited about. And frankly, um, mostly because on the operating side, it's gonna reduce our operating costs. Uh, we have solar, we have a lot of, you know, we're meeting national green building standards. Like, there's all kinds of things we've built in. Our project, uh, our units, we have almost all one bedroom, six hundred-ish square feet. They cost over five hundred thousand dollars a unit. Where we lost points because of that, uh, but we got a lot of points because of our location, location, location. So, uh, we were able to get funded, but it, we are not representative of every project you're gonna see, to kinda put that out there. Okay. Um, the biggest factors influencing affordable housing are probably pretty self-evident, but there they are. Uh, obviously, there's some of these that the planning staff and commission have more influence over than others. And I wanna talk a little bit about, um, what all new construction has to go through. Um, sometimes people have the impression that affordable housing is so crazily different than market rate, but fundamentally, these are the things that are the same. We have to, um, find and acquire property. Um, it takes a long time. I mean, three to five years, that's short. Like, we easily have seven years sometimes on start to finish from concept to occupancy. We have to hire all the professionals. We have to comply with all the codes. Uh, other developers think that the Housing Commission gets a break and, um, we get, uh, code, uh, breaks or, you know, building fee reductions or whatever the case may be. But we have to go through all the same things as every other developer. Um, it can take hundreds of hours to design a building. And the reason I say that you cannot design a building on the fly is because, you know, we have to do public meetings, we have to go in front of the Planning Commission, we have discussions all the time with various, um, stakeholders. And it's perfectly, um, legitimate to be curious about a design or to ask questions about a design. But I think from a planning commission perspective, if you have a developer in front of you and you're like, hey, can you do this? Would you do that? And you're acting as an individual, that developer has no idea really what the, uh, entire planning commission vote is going to be. And it's, in the design of the building, um, cannot be designed while we're sitting in front of, you know, a group of people in a, in a committee. We could make one change to a property that takes, um, dozens or of hours between our architect and our engineer to look at. We literally were trying to move a door, um, at our Catherine Street site and move a ramp. And it's taken, it's been almost two months of discussion, and we haven't figured out if we can make it happen. Because every time you change something in a project, it doesn't matter if it's a wall, or if it's a closet, or if it's a uh, HVAC system, like, it impacts so many other, um, parts of your design. And so I would just encourage you, when you're thinking about, um, the things that you talk about with a developer, try to, um, think of it as you're having a conversation, but you're not asking the developer to specifically do something that is not required by code. If you're worried about code, that's what the city staff are for. Whether it's, um, you know, the building department, the engineering department, planning staff, that's their job, is to make sure that code is followed.
Jennifer, I just wanna, just, I wanna add one thing. Um, you know, and I know you're gonna go into it in the next slide, but, um, I can't emphasize enough, um, I mean, all development likes, um, rules and likes predictability, um, especially in these timeframes. But with affordable housing, um, with the funding sources you're trying to weave together, um, the unknown of a land use approval price process or a site plan approval process, um, absolutely can kill a deal as far as, because it's already such a long timeframe. Um, and the pressures related to the competitiveness as well as, like, what you talked about, the total development cost, um, parameters, um, the use of credit parameters, um, those, knowing the front end, you know, the communities that I work in or the states that I work in, you, you know, understanding what the rules are and being able to get through that process in an expedient manner is, uh, leads to more affordable housing and, um, more successful projects.
Yeah, and I think when you do have developers in front of you, you know, not all developers react the same way, but if, if you are having a conversation about some design elements and they're saying, okay, great, I'll think about that, or that seems like a really good idea, I can guarantee you they're having a heart attack, trying to figure out how are they going to make this change, not knowing if it's one person on the Planning Commission or the whole entire group that's gonna be like, this needs to happen, and that they're surprised it's happening from a pan- Planning Commission level discussion and not from a code level discussion. And it, it really has a, uh, strong negative impact on any developers who are trying to get through the development process. Okay, so what is different? I'm not gonna read every single one of these items, but the, the main really, uh, big difference is access to capital. Um, where our funding comes from, and how quickly we can get it, and how many rules and regulations are piled on top of each other when you have multiple funding sources. It takes a lot longer to do everything. Um, our rents are capped. If somebody, uh, requires us or code, whatever the case may be, uh, to change a design or add some features that cost more, uh, for us to develop, we are, we can't just increase our rents. If our, if our, uh, utility bills suddenly spike because of changes in the marketplace after we've built it, we cannot change our rent. Uh, they're all, um, regulated by our funders. So how do you fund affordable housing projects? Uh, listed here are the main sources of funding. You could also add foundations. There's not a lot of foundations in Ann Arbor, interestingly enough, that do, uh, financial support or significant amounts of financial support for affordable housing, but there are in a lot of other communities. Um, but on the local side, the items that are influenced by the Planning Commission and the planning staff and local code would be the fees and regulations. Obviously zoning density, super helpful in reducing per unit costs. We have the Affordable Housing Millage, which is, uh, only one of two millages in the state of Michigan, uh, very unusual. We have a one dollar per unit service fee um, in lieu of property taxes. We are the only, uh, municipality I've ever heard of that has, uh, one dollar per unit. And most of them are just a reduced tax, property tax. And if you can have expedited review and permitting, to, to Lori's point, like, the time, you hear developers, developers say time is money, but on the affordable housing side, once you get your funding pulled together, particularly on the tax credits, which Lori will go into a bit too, you have a, a, a two-year essentially window to get your project constructed, or you start having to pay penalties off of what you're working on. Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to Lori. Uh, she's gonna try to hit the highlights on the tax credit program. Um, and you'll notice there's several slides on this, so she's not gonna read every little detail of it, but you can ask questions or keep note of your questions if you want us to come back to it.
Absolutely. So just quickly, so, um, really the most significant program that we've had for the last roughly thirty-eight years is the, um, the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program. It's an IRS program, which sometimes when people hear that, they're surprised. But it, it was, uh, came out of the nineteen, uh, eighty-six Tax Reform Act. And every state has it, um, the amount of, um, both nine percent credit.
uh, which we'll talk more about, um, is based upon a per capita, um, amount. So Michigan, uh, New York, um, you know, the larger states get, um, a larger per rad a share of the credits that are available each year on the nine percent side. The way the program works is, um, pretty simple in that, um, you know, credits are issued by, in, in Michigan is MISHDA. That's, e- each state has to designate a state agency that is in charge of kind of setting what the parameters are going to be as far as the competition to, uh, to secure the credits. And, um, there are of course, as, um, as Jennifer mentioned earlier, there are income restrictions, um, that are set, uh, set forth, uh, based upon, um, you know, the, the IRS program. And, um, there are three ways to get there. You know, you can, um, uh, uh, set it, set it up where there's twenty percent of the units are set at fifty percent, forty at sixty, or you can do income averaging. But the idea is to get, uh, to, um, a targeted reduction, uh, to sixty percent. So, um, so there are two programs, um, the nine percent and we'll first talk about the nine percent. Hugely competitive, every single state, um, most states I should say. You know, a couple of states give back credits each year, uh, Mississippi occasionally. You know, some of the states where there's less, um, less, uh, activity or less, uh, it's definitely a developer-driven program. As I mentioned, um, MISHDA, um, sets the process for, um, the, what they call the Qualified Allocation Plan. Uh, in Michigan, they do it every two years. And what the system set up to try to, um, have the most favorable projects kind of, be selected, um, through the, uh, annual application process. It used to be in Michigan, there were two, uh, funding rounds per year. But after COVID, um, they've been, uh, doing a single cycle the last couple of, um, the last couple of, um, rounds. And, um, a- as I, as I mentioned, it's two, every two years, there's a very large public input process to try to kind of set what are the goals across the state. But you can see some of the key points, um, that are typically, um, found in each qualified allocation pa- plan for the last, you know, probably twenty years. But some of the things I just want to point out quickly is, um, that issue of readiness. Readiness, um, you know, when Jennifer said, you know, developers maybe in, when they're in front of you say, that's interesting, you know, I'll take that, take that back, uh, you know, and trying to be polite. But probably having heart attacks in that, you know, readiness is a key point. So, um, I, I definitely have been in spots where, um, you know that your application deadline is coming and, um, you know that, um, other communities, uh, with projects going in, you know, have secured their zoning site plan approval, you know, requiring nothing more than building permits. So it's a very, very big, uh, very, very big deal. As, as Jennifer mentioned, um, you know, it's kind of even in the Michigan, um, rules at MISHDA, you know, sometimes the things are across purpose. They don't want you to necessarily, uh, spend much per, um, per individual unit or use much credit per individual unit. But as you can see, um, you know, you know, they want the key locations that, you know, we all do, close to transportation, employment, you know, all the great things, which usually means higher land costs. There's, uh, adherence needed for the green policy, which definitely we all, you know, embrace. But definitely adds cost, um, accessible, visible units, you know. Many of these things are very, very positive items that, um, definitely, um, push a project to, uh, to, uh, violate, you know, Michigan's, um, uh, you know, cost per unit, um, limits that they set each year. I think we can, uh, move on to the next slide. The other program, um, I should have mentioned, uh, with the nine percent, it's, it's very competitive because, um, there is only a certain number of credits that are given out each year by the federal government. Four percent credits, um, are what we call as-of-right credits in that, um, when, when you seek tax-exempt financing in any one of our states, four percent credits, um, are as-of-right, meaning that they're not competitive. You need to meet threshold items to be able to secure the credits. The downside of the four percent credits, um, um, is that they're just not as valuable. They don't, um, render, um, anywhere near, um, the amount of, uh, equity that can be raised on a nine percent. The other, um, uh, I guess quote downside to the four percent, um, um, option is, um, because there's less equity, um, gap is almost, uh, you know, very few deals that I've done in the last, you know, twenty, twenty-five years, um, don't need other, um, sources of funding. I mean, nine percent for that too, but very much so on the four percent. It's great because MISHDA does have what they call a gap funding program. It's a companion program that goes along, um, with the, uh, tax exempt, um, uh, debt that they issue. Many states issue bonds, um, on the open market, you know, for, for packages of projects. MISHDA is actually a direct loan, meaning they raise the money, you know, on the side and then they enter into a direct, direct, um, loan agreement with projects. The downside to that is, um, MISHDA has, um, their own set of design guidelines. And they're, of course, they're very good, you know, all the things that we want to see in projects. But, um, unfortunately, um, sometimes it can bump up against, uh, maybe what the, um, the requirements or goals in the community are, um, um, as well as the things that we, you know, as I mentioned with the nine percent specific guidelines that actually will push the cost, you know, of the overall development in a way that, you know, it becomes, um, you know, cost prohibitive. The other kind of extra step that many times, um, the source of MISHDA's gap funding, almost all of their programs besides they, they, um, have, um, some funds that are just programmed in, income that don't have the taint of, um, federal, um, you know, the originally, uh, originating from the federal government. So almost all of the gap funds, uh, kick in the, uh, NEPA, uh, Part Fifty-Eight or Part Fifty Review, which, um, NEPA, the National Environmental Protection Act. So the additional kind of time that gets layered on top of just, um, you know, what the, the regular site plan, land use, you know, um, site control, all the issues that, you know, need to happen before you can put, um, an application actually in. And so when you kind of, as Jennifer mentioned, if you layer all the steps in, um, you know, it's nothing for projects. You know, I think we put in the slide two to three years, but, um, I, you know, I've had projects that have lasted, you know, from conception to actually being able to be, um, constructed five, six, seven. I even had one eight years. So it, it takes a long time because each of the funding processes is at a point in time. And then, you know, you're competing against a law, a large, um, you know, universe of projects. So it's, it's kind of, it's very difficult to align the stars, um, in a way, whether you're using nine percent or four percent, um, tax credits. And, and I think someone, I'm not sure if it was the planning staff or someone had said, you, you know, in our slide on the nine percent that, um, you know, um, for thirty-eight years, three, three and a half million is actually probably closer to three, three point six million units. That doesn't sound very good. Not, um, you know, it's, it's a very, um, it's, it's, it's a very, um, long, process, very expensive process. But unfortunately, in our country, there's, you know, that's, that's what we have, um, have right now.
If I could add also, um, think about MISHDA being the entire state. There's not a lot of urban areas, there's a lot more rural suburban areas than urban. And so a lot of their design guidelines are aimed toward, uh, three-story walk-up. Not, you know, six-story, eight-story, twelve-story urban environments, uh, which has caused a lot of conflict for us in the projects we've been trying to develop. And the other thing is, you may be wondering, what the heck is a credit? What is a tax credit? What does that mean? Very simply, we apply for these tax credits, we get awarded by MISHDA, we don't pay any, um, uh, business tax. So we sell them, we sell them for cash, that's how it works. We sell our credits for cash, usually to a lender or a insurance company. And depending on what's happening in the marketplace and where people want to put their money, we may get a dollar for dollar, which is very rare. We may get ninety-two cents on the dollar, we may get eighty-five cents on the dollar. So it's constantly fluctuating.
And, 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 um, I, I should mention, you know, it's a really good point is, you know, we have so much instability now, I guess, in the world generally, um, you know, unknowns of kind of where we are. But, um, in the tax credit, um, arena, um, i- in, it's not just Ann Arbor that sells the credits. It's, you know, anyone, no one really buys the credits. Developers don't, you know, you know, in rare occasions, but don't buy the credits. But in the syndication market, that idea of, you know, um, a, a, a company, um, taking those credits that you have and marketing them, um, there's a lot of chaos going on right now, a lot of unknowns. One great thing was, you know, with the Inflation Reduction Act, the, um, all the new money related to, um, you know, climate change prevention and energy efficiency. But unfortunately, um, it's a direct, which is kind of an oxymoron, is a direct competitor, um, against the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program. Because, you know, there's only so many institutional, most of the buyers of credits are banks. Banks, insurance companies, large institutional, um, you know, purchasers. And energy credits are way easier, um, way less brain damage than a low-income housing tax credit. And, um, the way that, um, the, um, the way that the credits have been set up on the energy side have made it very user-friendly. So that's something, the other thing that, um, has been just awful lately are the, um, you know, the, uh, uh, interest rates, you know, related to, um, both construction and permanent, um, loans. There's usually, you know, many of these deals, there needs to be, even if it's small, a small, um, you know, um, private piece or as we mentioned, a tax-exempt loan, um, loans, the rates have been, you know, um, just incredibly, um, up and down, you know, really, um, for the last, you know, four years. So it's really created a lot of, um, a lot of uncertainty.
And I don't know if we've covered all, let's try to take a quick look.
Yeah, I think we have, you know, there's just a lot of, a lot of uncertainty going on right now. Kind of related to that is just the, um, the incredibly long lead times on some of our commodities, um, and supplies. It's, it's improved in the last, you know, at least in my experience, in the last, you know, um, probably eight to twelve months. You know, coming right out of COVID, it was just absolutely horrible. But it just, you know, when we talk about, you know, all the sequencing of events, you know, from, you know, project, um, conception to, you know, getting site plan approvals and then you throw in, you know, um, you know, needing, you know, uh, you know, eighteen months for a generator or, you know, fifty-two months for, you know, transformers. You know, it, it, it really just has, um, been very difficult, um, the last few years. And then as Jennifer mentioned, um, the downward timing adjusters. You know, we, we ran it, we ran up against this a little bit in, um, when I was with, um, you know, assisting the, um, Housing Commission, you know, you have a very, um, tight timeframe under the IRS rules. So, um, you know, the purchaser of the tax credits, um, if, if things are not delivered on, um, you know, on the agreed-upon schedule, um, there are penalties. And we definitely experienced that, um, with, um, our last project in Ann Arbor. And, uh, it can be very painful because, you know, you barely have, you know, enough funds, you know, to put the deals together in the first instance.
And then just a quick note that, um, tax credits does not, the program does not allow you to use rent to pay supportive services. We have to go out and get outside grants to do that for, if we have any. All right, I'm going to actually ask Darren to cover this, uh, slide, which is Ann Arbor-specific challenges in addition to the, you know, the tax credit world and affordable housing world.
Yeah, so, um, we'll just kind of walk, this is my one, I only get one slide, Lori got a whole lot of slides. So I'll take my time a little bit, but, um, just walk through these bullet points. I'm sure people on Planning Commission have heard some of this stuff before. But, uh, going back to the light tech, which most affordable housing projects have, there's a pretty set timeline and it's all based on, as Lori said, it's, it's, these days a one-year, once-a-year application window and that starts your process to have your building fully built and occupied. So you don't start incurring these penalties. And so one of the things you would like to have is Planning Commission approval is, is, you know, site plan approval these days in Ann Arbor, to have that before you go in. But doing the next bullet point, engineering review is kind of, anybody that's built in Ann Arbor knows, that's, that's the most challenging, can be the most challenging review to, to satisfy and can involve multiple rounds of reviews and, uh, is a little more subjective as to what's required to get there. And, um, I do want to point out, like, one of the things that we talked about when we're reviewing this is, you know, the, the city is set up in different silos, I call it, you know, particularly community services, which where Brett works and, and everybody in planning and building. And then there's public services and public services is in charge of all the roads and water mains and sewer mains and other, you know, um, real assets of the city. So as great as the planning staff is trying to be the advocate for the development team to get through entitlement, the, um, people that work in the public services sector, that's not really their mission. Their mission is to protect this assets of the city. And so when you talk about connecting to the water main, connecting to the sewer main, what does that have impact on the water and sewer treatment plants? Can actually, you have to dig up the, the public road to get to the public water main. All of these things that developers asking to do and, and needs to do, the, the public services is, is more like, well, that's my road, that's my water main and, and you want to disrupt it. So they need to be, and, and their, their goal is to be very protective for all of us, to protect the, the community asset. So that's just a, a mindset that, um, I don't think anybody in public services would disagree with. But that's why they're not really looking to expedite that process and, and they're doing their due diligence and protecting the asset. That being said, most communities getting something like a water connection approved, it's part of the building permit application, there's not this whole separate, um, engineering review process. So it, that is kind of a unique, uh, challenge that Ann Arbor has that, um, is a little, a lot more onerous than, than most other communities in Michigan and around the country. So that, that, I, if there's one thing that I think could be made less challenging, it would be the engineering review. But like I said at the beginning, nobody on this, uh, panel is, has authority over that. The next thing is kind of a unique thing that, that started years ago when the, when the stormwater systems came into existence. You know, you can't get a full building permit if you're, if your building requires a stormwater system, which most new construction does. They'll only give you a foundation-only permit. Well, you go out to get funding, whether it's private sector or affordable, uh, this, this not having a full building permit yet asking to close on a construction loan makes most banks or lenders, whatever they are, very uncomfortable. I'm giving, I'm going to sign off on this loan and what happens if you don't even get your building permit? And so, you know, there's, there's a process that the city has where they'll give you a letter and you have to have a conversation, but it's yet another thing that slows the process down. It causes questions to be asked by the lenders, eyebrows to be raised. It's, it's unique and not normal and therefore, um, doesn't make things go any smoother compared to other communities. The next one talks about timing and coordination of building and engineering. So that is kind of going back to the, the first bullet point a little bit is getting your, going through the entitlement process. There's a number of departments that need to be satisfied just to get on the agenda for Planning Commission. And that can take some time, there's some rounds of that. But then, like I already mentioned, engineering, that process doesn't even start until after site plan. So it just extends, you think you're entitled, but you're not really entitled until you're, till you get through engineering. Obviously, it was, it was mentioned a couple of times before, land and working in the city of Ann Arbor comes with a higher cost, uh, point. So people want to be here, that's great. And unfortunately, that's, we talk about affordable housing and expensive land and expensive construction, those two things tend to, uh, go. Those two things tend to, uh, go against, against one another. Uh, there are some uniques, particularly building in downtown. The next one talks about, you know, city design requirements. You know, you've got various overlay districts. We're in the main, Catherine Street, for instance, in the Main Street Overlay District. We worked really hard on the Catherine project in particular to not have it be a high-rise building. Uh, high-rise buildings, if, as you may know, once you cross that threshold of height, all sorts of life safety, uh, uh, requirements get kicked in. There's a significant cost to, to go from currently fifty-four feet to fifty-five feet. Next year it'll become seventy-five feet like everywhere else in the country, which is great. Um, but things like, you know, the street wall setback, being two stories to have that street wall setback, that's, that's a real challenge structurally for a lot of buildings. When you're trying to do a housing project and you want floors two through whatever to be the exact same footprint, yet your second floor is required to be bigger because of the street wall setback, that just creates a structural challenge. And we're dealing with it on Catherine that, that adds significant costs and adds significant design challenge. So even, even something like a street wall setback is, you know, it was put in the code for, for understanding the reasons why, but it, it does add cost to the project. And there's a additional items there that I know you guys have talked about it pretty much every time you review a project. Um, bicycle storage is a big one now. When, when the parking code changed, bicycle storage and Class A storage in particular was doubled essentially. Bike storage typically wants to be on the ground floor. You do a high-rise building, there's only so much ground floor real estate. And to dedicate more and more of that ground floor real estate to, in, in a, in the downtown in particular, to bicycle storage, that becomes a challenge. Your other choices are to dig a basement, which we did do partially on Catherine, but not for bike storage. Or you have people taking their bikes into the elevator and having them on upper floors of the building. That creates operational issues that, you know, you're beating up your elevator and you're tracking salts in the, into the elevator in the winter. It's just all sorts of things that add to the, not only the development, but the construction or operating costs. Uh, next one is one of my favorites that I've spent way too much time in various commission meetings on is, um, the fees associated with the things that come out of the engineering review. Developer offset mitigation fees, civil escrow fees, um, tap and connection fees. These are, these are multimillion-dollar costs that, again, the city, uh, Public Services Department is, is protecting their asset. They've got some, you know, all across the country, civil engineering infrastructure is aging and it's expensive to replace. And they're looking for sources of funding to address those costs. But when you start piling these, these costs onto affordable housing projects and you start doing the dollars per unit, just on this one bullet point for water connection fees or offset mitigation fees, those are huge dollars. And going back to what Jennifer said about when you apply for a nine percent deal, you're, one of the scoring is your price per unit. That's a huge line item within that price per unit that maybe there's an opportunity to take a look at that. But like I said before, it's not really in the Community Services Department. And then the last bullet is the same thing I just talked about, is that the cost per unit on your scoring is, um, it's tough. When, when you add up everything we talked about above and what Laurie talked about, we're trying to make affordable housing and we're adding a lot of costs. And so those, we just have to figure out a way to, how can we provide some relief for affordable housing from the government fee side?
All right, um, thanks Darren and Laurie. I'm gonna talk a little bit about parking. Um, parking, please don't make us do things that's not required by code. And thank you very much for everyone who pushed for no parking requirements in the downtown. Um, as Brett reminded me, we couldn't have built Catherine if it had, hadn't happened because there's no way we could have provided parking for that site as an affordable housing project. Um, unfortunately, we're driven by our funders. And if you want to see more housing built, particularly affordable housing, we have to follow what our funders require. Um, and MISTDA is driving that. And so on the four percent side, they do require a two-to-one ratio. You can ask for a waiver, but you are not guaranteed a waiver, and they're not gonna go down to no parking. Um, and they're gonna look at, they're gonna do a market study, and their market study people are statewide, and they look at things very differently. They're not from Ann Arbor. They don't know how things work here. They don't care what we care about. Like, they could give two shits about what is important to Ann Arbor. They're looking at the whole state. And so you cannot guarantee that they'll give you a waiver that you'd like. Uh, we were able, and that's on the four percent because of the design guidelines that Laurie, uh, expressed was, uh, more, there's more control by MISTDA when you do the four percent than the nine percent, weirdly. Um, on the nine percent, they determine parking based on a, their market study. Again, and you have to use MISTDA's market person. And we took months of negotiation with MISTDA to allow, after we were awarded the nine percent tax credits, after we were like having to start our design and our clock started ticking for construction, then the marketing person came in behind and they're like, "Hey, we think you need to have parking down here." And so literally, these are all the things we had to show them of why we didn't need parking for that particular building. Um, and that ended up was what really pushed me to have, to say, "Look, I'll pay for, and I'll buy", which developers not gonna do typically. "I'll buy two electric vehicles. We will make, um, them available to our residents." And then that was like the final thing that kicked it over to, um, allowing us not to have parking just on that site.
And, and, uh, in addition to MISTDA, um, um, I just want to mention, you know, you, a lot of your, um, things you do in affordable deals are driven by your investor. And most investors aren't, um, of the same mindset, you know. Um, you all have done amazing things in the city of Ann Arbor, but it's definitely not necessarily the norm. So, um, um, you, you know, many times we get pushback, if not from MISTDA, definitely, um, from investors that are seeing projects across the country um, and that still believe, you know, um, some parking is, you know, is, is still the norm, you know, rightly or wrongly.
And I could add that what we find is our single adults, our younger, especially single folks who have, um, a different perspective on, um, cars. I'm an old lady. I like my car. I have kids. I like to take my kids and my grandkids. We all want to drive them around. That's not the case for, uh, most of our single adults that are, that are low income. But our family sites did not have enough parking. They, I would never build a family site in the downtown. We can only build it outside the downtown and we absolutely need parking for our families. Our fam, no family that I know of has an electric vehicle. Um, and they're never gonna be able to afford an electric vehicle that's more than their annual income or even a used electric vehicle for many, many, many years. Um, and so that's what we experience with on the parking side, like actual managing of our properties. And I think this is the last one. Go ahead.
One, one last thing, um, you know, I, I became aware of, you know, the, the, the strategy that was, was developed, you know, in conjunction, and MISTDA allowed the, the purchase of the electric vehicles. And I think Jennifer's point is a really good one, that, you know, most developers aren't gonna have the ability to raise the funds to do that. And I would even, I guess, ask, you know, managing affordable housing is so hard on its own. You know, there's never enough hands. You know, you're dealing with, you know, um, you, you know, uh, many times, um, you know, residents that need services, you, you know, not necessarily, um, services managing an electric vehicle, but services related to, you know, employability, you know, all of the things that make, you know, residents more successful. So that's the only thing that, you know, you know, gives me a little pause is, you know, managing affordable housing is so hard. And then layering things like managing, um, you know, an electric vehicle is just, I mean, it's great and it's innovative, but, you, you know, long-term sustainability, you know, those are things that, you know, you have to wonder about.
And I do wonder about that. And we'll let you know in a couple of years how it worked out. Um, and then here's our last slide. Um, these are some sort of big-picture recommendations to reduce barriers to, um, housing development in general. And on the slide that I sent to Hank, the bottom five bullet points were not indented. It's not eight bullet points, it's three bullet points with some, the last five are related to the third one. Um, obviously, the first one you guys are supportive of, I'm assuming. Um, the second one is really about, we, if we're a community that wants to promote development and, and like, like Darren said, that's not gonna come from the Public Service Department. It's gonna come from the Community Service Department. But we really need to understand what our infrastructure is, where you can build, what needs to be, um, upsized. And if we really want to support it, we should support it as financially as a community instead of on each individual development project. Um, that's my opinion anyway. And then the third one is, um, there has been a lot of discussion about making development easier. Uh, there was a study that was, uh, provided to City Council that they adopted about, uh, eight months ago. Uh, it was led by John Fournier, and it was looking at, um, barriers to development. And I'm adding this in here as a, we also support and emphasize how important it is to look at reducing barriers to development. Um, the reason that I put in here an independent entity is that it is hard for staff to find the time, to take the time, to do the work it would take to really, uh, make these changes. And so it would be helpful, I think, to have someone who doesn't have any skin in the game. They're not a developer. Um, they've worked in other communities. They can come in and compare and say, uh, not just processes, which is, um, something that, um, I know Lisa had, Councilmember Dish had, um, asked about the question of the, of the recommendations. Most of those were about processes. I would also say it would be useful to look at comparing the International Building Code and any other codes related to development that get adopted from a large, you know, from the state or federal, uh, or, you know, nationally, and compare it to the city's codes in all those different areas. And let someone else, not a staff person, go, "Hey, here are the six hundred things the city of Ann Arbor adopted that is not required by any other code." And then go back and say, "Okay, well, which of those are high-priority items that could have a real big impact if we, if we changed our code?" That's what I'm trying to get at on this one. And I think that is, it, and Hank, I don't know if you want to open it up for questions or if you want me to answer some of the questions that we got in advance first?
Well, I'm gonna turn it back over to our chair for the evening. But on, I just wanted to mention very quickly on the second bullet here. Well, um, Mr. Leonard might, uh, speak to any questions related to densely developable zoning work in the comprehensive plan. Um, the folks on this meeting know that that is underway. But in terms of number two, um, public infrastructure analysis, at least some of that is being done in artist and in a comprehensive fashion by our colleagues in public services. They have a, a wastewater comprehensive, um, uh, planning, uh, strategy that I don't know the, the current status of, but I know that it was being worked on this year. And there was a recently-launched stormwater comprehensive plan that we have also a liaison to, Mr. Kwalski is our planning liaison to that. And this commission will have a presentation on that stormwater comprehensive plan, at least one of those at your, uh, January seventh meeting. I wanted to mention that.
Thank you. Um, and Jennifer, Laurie, Darren, thank you all so much for this really information-rich presentation. Um, I think, Steph, correct me if I'm wrong, the goal is just sort of have an open discussion that we can take the next thirty-ish minutes for that. Um, and I want to open it up to everybody, but I actually want to start with, Councilmember Dish had asked several questions via email. I think some of them were answered, but I wanted to toss it to you firstly so to see if you had others that were not answered that you wanted to start the discussion with.
Oh, I, um, and please feel free to always call me Lisa, um, anyway. I heard.
I did.
I heard her correct herself. And, um, anyway, um, I think it'd be good, I mean, we could come to those questions if they don't, if the rest of them don't get answered. But I heard a lot of them get answered, as a matter of fact. I think the presentation has probably raised a lot of questions for many of us. And so I feel like we should go directly to people's questions in response to the presentation, if, if that makes sense. And then we can come back around to the written ones.
Okay. Does anybody want to kick us off? Commissioner Wetherby.
Okay, I have a few that I think are super easy and then some more, a couple more complicated. Um, so first question is, what is the definition of a four-person house? So, uh, four-person household? Is that four adults? Is it a two-bedroom? Is it a two adults, two children? Like, that's just something that I see that all the time, where it's like four-person house and household. And what is?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Four persons, four person. It doesn't have any definition of how many adults, children. Uh, it could be three generations, four generations. It's just four people.
Okay. So there's no definition of like number of bedrooms or?
Well.
Like, it could be a one-bedroom house? It, it doesn't really matter?
It's a different question of what a four-person household is and then how many people can live in a, a certain bedroom size, like that's, some of our, um, our funders regulate how many people can live in a one or a two, but also it gets regulated by local code, like, um, so it can be a combination.
I know the number of, like, square footage per person, but, okay.
Yeah.
Um, and then, um, another question, and I think this was somewhat answered, is, is there any indication of a new federal administration's effect on any of these programs? Which I think the answer is, we don't know, right? Or?
I mean, I think it's an interesting question, and we have been talking about it a lot. If I were to predict, I'd say we will lose funding from HUD. It will impact our vouchers. It will impact our actual rent subsidies, would be my guess. Um, but, um, President Trump is a multifamily developer. There could be some strange new changes that make development easier. I have no idea. It's harder to predict. But on the financing market, I know, uh, Laurie and I have had discussions on that if you want to talk about the predictions that we're seeing out there on the financing.
So, um, I mentioned, I mean, this, again, it's just perverse, but, um, you know, one of the things that the low-income housing tax credit syndicators, the, the people that sell the credits on the market, you know, have been harmed by the energy, the flood of energy credits. And so, um, perversely, you know, a lot of the talk related to, um, kind of, um, uh, ending or changing, um, you know, some of the impacts of the Inflation Reduction Act, that actually could help the, um, low-income housing tax credit market. Um, you know, um, not a good thing, obviously, um, but I've been hearing that from syndicators. Um, interest rates, um, you, you know, uh, if interest rates settle down, that definitely will help, um, um, you, you know, all development, but definitely in the affordable side. Um, but I, before the, um, election, um, most of the syndicators I work with were losing their minds. Um, you know, just with the worry of what would happen. Um, people have settled down a little bit since the election. Um, but I think what Jennifer says is, it's really hard to predict, you, you know, what is gonna happen. Um, uh, but people definitely, um, at least on the tax credit side, have, have kind of settled in a little bit. We were seeing pricing down, um, a lot of good markets down to, Jennifer mentioned a dollar, um, per credit, which, um, we've gotten before. Um, um, my last deal, um, that just closed was, um, about eighty-five cents. So, um, which is, you know, a huge, a huge amount of money, um, to be lost on a deal. So just a lot of uncertainty.
And Darren, you've talked about what we've been hearing about the construction side.
Right. The two main things that you hear from President-elect Trump about that would affect the construction is, uh, deportation of undocumented immigrants. There was a thing, I think it was on Wall Street Journal, I saw it today, uh, that estimates are nationally thirteen percent. Thirteen percent of the construction workforce in the country is undocumented immigrants. So if we're gonna round thirteen percent of the workforce up and s- send them out of the country, that's gonna have a negative effect on our ability to get workers. Uh, and then in, imports, uh, tariffs on imported raw materials, you know, that'll certainly increase costs. One thing's interesting, if you remember from, uh, you know, more than four years ago, President Trump, at the time, import, imposed a tariff. President Trump, at the time, imposed a tariff on raw lumber imports, which predominantly come from Canada. Those tariffs were never taken away by Biden administration. Those are still there today. So that's one of the reasons why lumber prices remain high. But I guess the good news, if it is, is that we don't think those are going to go any higher. Those, there was no indication that he's going to increase the existing tariffs, but things like drywall and raw materials for steel, a lot of things that come from Mexico that aren't currently have tariffs on them, could have tariffs added. So a lot of reasons to think that construction costs would go up. But then, like Jennifer said, we know that he made his money by developing things. So, you know, he he understands that you would think he understands that and can't just drive costs through the roof all over the place.
Okay, thank you. And then and then the last thing is just, I'm going to put this out there. And I don't know if this is more city staff or is how can we as the planning commission, you know, contribute to this process? How can we help make it better, cheaper, while still fulfilling our responsibilities? Because I'm definitely sensing the frustration or a frustration that like any barrier makes things more complicated. And, you know, if we say, hey, we want more bike parking or the sort of comments on the fly. But it it also is tricky when you sit on a border commission where you're supposed to, where you have responsibilities or in theory responsibilities. And like, do we just say, oh, you know, hey, nice to see you all again. Thanks for bringing this project. Have a nice day. You know, do we even, do we have to bring these to the planning commission? Do we, is is there a way we can do this where either we don't even have to come to the planning commission at all with these or where we can have effective comments or discussions or that public comment can be effective? Because it feels like those things are kind of at odds. And and that's, you know, this is super helpful and interesting, but it doesn't feel like anything that I can contribute is is going to be anything but a barrier. And that's a difficult position to be in on a board or a commission. Because I I don't want to stand in the way of having more affordable housing. But there's also a certain sense that like, hey, we do have a responsibility here. And and so just how we can make that work better for all of us is. So that's my, that's my big question there. And I'll move on to other people.
Fred, if you want to jump in.
Yeah, I think and it's inherent in some of the goals of process improvement. I don't have all the answers by any stretch, but I think one of the ways that we could do, one of the goals is to actually further consider what plans come to the planning commission and what don't. Just as a reminder, a site plan is an administrative function, whether I approve it at my desk, whether you approve it at the planning commission table or city council approves it at the as an elected body. It's always an administrative function. And so one way I think that we could think about that tension, which I I fully get, is frankly, take away more of the administrative tasks even even more so to give you more space and capacity to focus on what are the code changes? You know, you're hearing requiring a 15 foot first level to downtown buildings for long term flexibility of use. That adds a cost barrier to that. So I think one way to do it is to spend more of the planning commission time on those maybe formative issues that others then can apply. So not a full answer, but that's, that's how I would initially respond to it. And I appreciate just while I have everybody's ear, I appreciate Jennifer's thought about, you know, I I 100% agree with her. It's hard. It's hard for us to at times get out of the way of doing the work to think about process improvement and think about regulatory. I totally get that. At the same time, I would say that when you're talking about building codes and zoning and infrastructure investments and engineering standards, it is an incredibly tangled web. And I and I I just want to be clear, I don't know that it's always easy for an external party to be able to come in in some easy, I don't, my term, not anybody else's swashbuckling way and say, oh, you know, the city has it all wrong in these regards. So I think the resources, that really resonates with me. There has to be some, there has to be some city direction prioritization or resource for that to be successful as well.
Councilmember Dish.
Thank you. Okay, so thank you for starting with that question, those questions. Commissioner Wetherby. So I wanted to also start with a quick question. This is for planning staff. I'm really glad to hear that our colleagues in public services are doing wastewater and stormwater comprehensive plans. I think I probably knew that, but it might have slipped my mind. Are those plans being coordinated with the comprehensive land use plan? We we know that the land use plan is starting to identify where where there will need to be development because it's the only option. So.
No. Yes, we, the timing is happening is happening in a really productive way. But spoiler alert, bicentennial recently celebrated, we have a bunch of old infrastructure and it's going to be very costly to upgrade it. And so the the not coordinating is one of the decisions that this group is going to have to make. And to be clear, we have staff and the project team have been focusing on a what is our land use vision for the city? And what are the barriers to get there? And one of the barriers to get there might very well be significant infrastructure investment in some geographies of the city. And so we're trying to do our best to daylight those things. However, I want to be clear, we are not saying, oh, this area should remain in a low density residential because it's going to be costly and expensive. So those are going to be big questions and they're going to be big checks that we're going to have to figure out how to solve. But so yes, we are, we are absolutely coordinating that plan with those efforts. But at the end of the day, I think you as a policymaker and a budget maker are going to be probably challenged by it because it's going to, it's going to be articulating some visions that we might not know the full breadth and timeframe for us to get to those outcomes.
That's really helpful. I definitely would not want the land use plan to rule out development in areas because there's costly infrastructure. I think daylighting is exactly the right approach. So but another big message that I'm getting from this presentation is one that I've heard before, but it's important, it's helpful to hear it this way, which is that we put far too many of these infrastructure costs off on a project by project basis. And so I think, you know, sometimes we assume that developers have such big profit margins, it doesn't hurt them. But given our ambitious goals to get more units in the city, we don't want market developers going to places where it's cheaper to develop like Madison or Chicago. And we certainly don't want to be taxing, to use Commissioner Adams' phrase, affordable housing developments with this project by project thing. So I don't know what the answer is there. I don't know how we raise the money. But obviously, we need to start thinking about that money just needs to go to these things that aren't very much fun to spend money on. It's much more fun to spend on, you know, bike lanes, which we have to keep on spending. So this, but this is really helpful. I I this is something I want to talk about with my colleagues because we have to take it seriously. So but on the first thing that came up, or rather the second, I just don't know why we don't have administrative approval, certainly for all 100% affordable projects. As long as they don't need a rezoning. And, you know, maybe even market projects as well. I mean, I could, because the argument that you made, Mr. Leonard, was because it's an administrative, both are administrative approvals, no matter who makes them. Does it really matter? I would say that since affordable housing projects play by different rules about the timeline that are much less flexible and they lose money, there'd be a strong argument for singling them out for that kind of relief. And I saw your hand, so maybe the chair should call him.
We definitely something we can look at, but I just want to be honest. One of the things that comes to mind is it doesn't happen as much lately, but early in my career and at my time here, occasionally somebody will say, I can't believe the city would allow that house to become a rental. Or I can't believe, you know, or we might get some sort of feedback. And we are, I bring up that example because we are ambivalent. A house is a house, whether it's a rental, whether it's owner occupied, it is a house. Likewise, when we are starting to differentiate between how a 50 unit affordable housing building might be regulated versus how is a 50 unit market rate apartment building might be regulated? I I'm not sitting here to say that we can't distinguish them from those, but those are the kind of factors that I think we'd want to be mindful of. I think the bigger question is the process improvement. If we want to encourage housing at all costs, why wouldn't we want to provide some of that benefit across the board? It doesn't have to be pitting a benefit to affordable housing. Maybe that's a benefit that we want to extend to housing. So definitely something we can look at, but I don't, I don't, I just want to be honest. I think it would take some careful consideration about how we potentially apply a different process to a building in form, scale and size. It might be very similar, but for this one operational aspect.
Understood, worth more discussion, have some thoughts on that, but no need to prolong this now. I just want to ask one more question and this is, this is from Ms. Hall. So am I understanding, Jennifer, that energy efficiency and geothermal are selling points from the operational perspective? But the upfront capital costs need subsidy. And what we've heard tonight is that New York has this great way of of footing the upfront capital costs. And my understanding was that there was a large subsidy from the Office of Sustainability and Innovation for the Catherine site. Okay, so in that instance, we did that. But so here's another place. I don't know how we can raise the money for all the things that have to go underground. And then, well, that's more stuff that needs to go underground. And then all the really better things that need to go underground for things to be sustainable. I'm I'm seeing that as a big, but I, but I I'm very interested that they, these efficiencies sell themselves from an operational or may sell themselves from an operational cost perspective. And so we need to think more clearly about distinguishing those two things and see what we could do about trying to find money to subsidize capital costs. Because right now, that's just not something that we do for market developers. But it sounds like it needs to be so.
Yeah, I agree. And I, I think it's important also to talk about, there's different ways to accomplish electrification. If we were not able to do geothermal, I was like, oh, my gosh, how are we going to make this work? And it took a tremendous effort. I think you probably heard about what it took to get through the county permitting process for the geothermal wells. Otherwise, I don't think we could have done it. And that was a, that added over a million dollars, well over a million dollars to what our otherwise, you know, our HVAC system would have cost. And the sustainability department provided $475,000 grant, which is amazing. And so that helped us a lot. It didn't reduce our total development cost, but it absolutely made it a more feasible way to approach it.
You're good, correct. Commissioner Mills, thank Commissioner Norton.
Um, thanks. So Commissioner Wetherby said better and like the exchange about the things that we can do, I think, and particularly on process and what comes before us. I think has been discussed a lot, and I think that we really need to focus on that. What Commissioner Dish just said is a bit of the transition to the question that I had. So the operations costs, are those not taken into account when your assessed points at the beginning? Because I'm just thinking it's not just the sustainability cost, but also like the fact that we don't have, we have this payment in lieu of taxes option. Seems like our operational cost would be less than in many other places. Is that just not part of the formula?
Our operational cost, because of the $1 per unit for taxes, is 100% significant for us. What it allows us to do, though, is take on less debt. So other communities that don't have like grant type gap funding, they have to take on more debt and therefore their rents have to be higher than what we're able to do. So for me, the biggest thing is serving lower income households and taking on less debt, 100%. But I'm not aware, Lori, do you know, I can't think of anything I've ever applied to that you may have, you have to project what your operating costs are, but I don't ever remember seeing anything where you get points based on your operating costs.
No, I I'm not aware of anything, any, any benefit related to that.
So.
From a points perspective.
I'm just curious, given our conversation that preceded this one, if this is something that should be in the city's policy agenda to think about, like advocating? About looking at park, like reviewing parking or like considering operating costs? Especially or even if not that, the the case that Lori made earlier about like Michigan giving you a whole bunch more seeming to give more penalties if you have the above average cost? Not that we don't need to reduce costs. I don't like, we do need to do that. But I'm just wondering if there's something that needs to be on the city's policy agenda in Lansing that's both legislative, I mean, that policy agenda looks at legislation, but it also just looks at how the, how the agencies are carrying out their missions? If that would be helpful.
Yeah, I don't know enough about how much influence legislators have on MISHDA's policy, on how they make decisions. I don't typically see lobbyists. It's almost always developers that are part of those conversations. So I don't actually know, you know, how that part would work.
The QAP process, I mean, that would be, I would think of one way, what Sarah's suggesting is that we ask them when they update their QAP scoring system next time that they have a section for your operating pro forma and they create some sort of, you know, targets for per unit operating costs.
Well, the MISHDA does have, I mean, there are standards, there are standards across the state, you know, regionally of what the expectation is, the cost, you know, the cost to operate, you know, units. And if you are above that or even they get concerned if you're below that just because perhaps you have not projected correctly and that that could put the project in long term jeopardy. So there are expectations based upon what's going on within your region. So, so, I mean, that is, is in place. It isn't, isn't necessarily a scoring item. I mean, there is a scoring item related to energy efficiency, which does, you know, you know, factor back into, you know, ultimately operating costs. But it's always a push and pull. You know, it's, it's, you know, not enough capital dollars to put deals together. You know, you know, as Jennifer mentioned, trying to, there is incentive for targeting lower income units, you know, from MISHDA's perspective and really any other state, you know, to try to get to the lowest of, you know, 60% is is really the baseline. But to to be able to serve, you know, the the lowest of incomes, there are coins incentives to do that. So unfortunately, you know, there's a lot of unintended consequences, you know, kind of throughout our entire discussion this evening related to kind of what what we value, you know, or what MISHDA values. And then what are the cost implications related to that?
Well, the other thing is your operating cost is everything. So it's your debt, it's your maintenance, it's your property management. And utilities are a couple line items in your operating budget. And going back to our discussion about utilities, this is where the challenge is, is you have the tax credit program and the voucher program have utility allowance. And the way that's determined is by looking at the marketplace and what is the average cost of electric? What's the average cost of gas? There, the thing that I think could be advocated for is a more specific utility allowance for specific types of utilities. Like if you have geothermal, you get no. Like, if you have geothermal, you get no, uh, there's no change in my electric utility allowance because I have geothermal versus electric baseboard heaters, for example. Like that is, I think, an area that it could be impactful. Because otherwise, there's no incentive for a most, by the way, most developers of affordable housing are for-profit developers. So remember that piece too. Um, and so I have different motivations in Avalon than a for-profit developer who does have, you know, affordable housing portfolio. But uh, I'm literally having this conversation at three fifty South Fifth with our current co-developer because we're trying to make it very energy efficient. We're trying to have really low utility costs. I'm like, hey, you might want to consider paying the utilities with the rent and not have the tenants have those utilities. And they're like, well, we're really scared about how the tenants will use their utilities and will our utilities actually be higher than the utility allowance? Like, that's the the hard part of figuring out the electrification sustainability issue. Which is very different than the rest of your operating costs.
Great. Well, I think if there's anything that um, that the city of Ann Arbor's, it's not, I think that's their Lansing person, right? Who's following what the agencies are doing and what the legislature is doing. So I think does have, it's still within the purview to put it on this agenda about, you know, when, whatever the thing is that is cue that
Maybe they pay for it out of their big budget.
And not just that, I mean, there's things on here, like the last time it says pursue opportunities to secure funding, to protect um, and upgrade water, wastewater, drainage, like if there is something that we want, that we're thinking of that would be helpful for folks in Lansing to to make this more possible here, like that's something that like we can pass through Brett for the next time we talk about this in September or in in January.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Commissioner Norton. You are muted.
Sorry. Getting old. Um, n- not so much a question for presenters, but an observation that maybe they can comment on. I'm I'm just thinking about the first presentation on the policy goals that we stepped through of this of the city and then all of this stuff about the cost of housing. And I went just back and back and looked at the policy goals and it's really a lobbying goal for here are the things we want to do to lobby the State House or the federal government to do different things to help us figure out how to make housing more affordable. And then the presentation puts on the table, not only is it twice as much to build in Ann Arbor, it's three to four times as much. I would have fallen off my charity here. It's twice as much. But it's not that, it's three to four times as much. Why aren't we making a concerted effort to figure out why the heck it costs so much to build in Ann Arbor? I know from my own personal experience living here for twenty-three years and I have friends and colleagues in the development community who just are frustrated with Ann Arbor for how hard it is to get through all of the processes that Mr. McKinnon laid out in gory detail. And I know I've mentioned, I've talked with Councilmember Dish about this briefly before. I I get the sense like, well, we've got this complicated system and there's not much we can do about it. We just have to live with it. And and I'm mindful, Mr. Leonard, that we don't want somebody coming in and swashbuckling and saying it's really easy to do, but it seems to me that maybe there, it is time to take a concerted effort to figure out how the heck did we end up with such a complicated system that isn't intentionally trying to drive up costs, but sure seems to be an effective, uh, effectively doing it. And if we really want to make affordable housing in in Ann Arbor more possibility, that seems like a huge piece of the puzzle that I'm not hearing folks, I I don't know what Mr. Fornay's report said, maybe, maybe they're already pointing in that direction, but um, I guess I'm kind of raising my hand to say, could we spend more time talking about that or figuring out how to grapple with that problem, recognizing it's a beast? But it sure sounds like a beast that would be well worth spending some time trying to figure out how to work through. So I guess that's my plea. To try and give some, give that some attention in a meaningful way if if we can. Not knowing what's been done in the past, because I've just got on planning commission, so I'm still learning. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your comments. I just want to make one small clarification before, uh, anybody else responds. The three to four times the cost was literally all the fees that the city charges, whether that's sewer, water, hookup, um, when you add them all together, that was the specific thing, but there's other things that cost more, which is like land costs are high and labor costs are high too.
Every, everything, in my experience, everything in Ann Arbor, you can just double or triple compared to what you would spend anywhere. Well, that's a problem. I mean, it's a great place to be and I get it. And maybe it's because of the University of Michigan and the challenges that that creates, and I get that too. But, um, yeah, I sure think it would be nice to spend some serious time and effort trying to unbundle all of that. Thank, thank you.
Commissioner Dish.
I'll be very quick because I don't really think I have anything terribly illuminating to say about this, but that it has come up before of whether we couldn't waive these fees for some projects rather than others. And the answer is, well, then the others have, you know, those fees have to come from somewhere because the fees are not, they're not moneymakers. They pay for the cost of the staff time and stuff and whatever. I mean, I don't know everything they pay for. But and this is distinct from the question of having developers build infrastructure. This is a distinct thing, this question of fees. So it it is sounding to me as though there needs to be a way to create a fund so that, I don't know where this, I mean, the general fund is where it might have to be, where it's set aside so that rather than wa- waive the fees, we pay the fees. We say, we'll pay half your fees or we'll pay all your fees if you're a hundred percent affordable project and you're a you know, well, I don't know. And again, Mr. Leonard is going to say, I don't know if we can, it's if it's easy to make that distinction. But I I don't think that waiving, I'm not sure that waiving the fees is is going to, I don't know that waiving is the best way to think about it. I think subsidizing them out of some kind of fund of money, which I wish would come from the state. It would be thrilling if it would come from the TRUMP administration, but I don't think that it will. And so um, it, but and 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 I would love to have someone say, wait, no, no, we can go back and think about waiving. We don't have to try to imagine putting a little, you know, pot of gold together, but I'm just beginning to think that I don't know how else we do it, but I think we need to do something.
Um, I think it does require some creativity because, for example, we had to upsize the water main on Catherine. And so we talked to the DDA and the DDA did it with their funding and their oversight. It solved our problem and I didn't have to add nine hundred thousand dollars to my total development cost. So if it doesn't show up as a charge from the city, then I don't have to include it in my development costs. Uh, that's how I would put it. And so that was a creative way we figured out one piece of the puzzle.
Yeah, and the time too. I mean, if you talk to Maura about how that project went, it was years in the making and then just the execution was, of course, it didn't go smoothly because you're digging up a road that hasn't been dug up in a hundred years and ripping up bricks and railroad tracks to get to the water main. I mean, though, all of those things are just inherent in working in an old environment. Uh, that was, that was, I was going to mention that as well, Jennifer. That was a huge benefit to having the DDA do the the upfront water main upsizing. And they ran the leads to the property line as well, just hugely valued.
And frankly, part of what made it work was the city on the property. They sold it to the Housing Commission for a dollar. We didn't have holding costs. We just had lots of time to try to figure out how to make things work out. We're a developer that's, you know, buys a property or has a, uh, option to buy a property, doesn't have three years to figure that out. Which is why I like looking at that infrastructure in advance to, you know, support development is a good idea.
I'm just going to add too, like, I really appreciate your last slide summarizing those recommendations. So I think, you know, not just for affordable housing, but for any sort of development. I don't know how, I don't know how we would pay for this, but I would really support undertaking that review to reduce barriers. Like, I've been thinking about this for a while. I think it's come up. Um, we discussed it as a commission, but yeah, like just having you outline like fees, the reviews, like it was so helpful. And I I work for a developer, but just hearing like you have to do the foundation permits. And then there's like, maybe you won't get a building permit. And there's just so many layers of complexity, but it would be really interesting to have that analysis done and and see if there's anything we can do. I've talked out like, and I think there might be some questions on like, can we do this legally? But like, you know, we can't require electrification. We can't require affordable housing from developers, but could we fast track projects like through the process and do expedited reviews? Because I know those also take a lot of time. Um, so I would love to see funding for that type of review. Any last comments, questions?
Well, I wanted to ask if is this presentation what you all hoped for when this was put on commission proposed business? Is that, is what I need to know? Is it this satisfied the challenges and the, um, lack of information at the table?
I found this incredibly helpful. I think I see a lot of nods.
Yes.
Yeah, just giving us the space to like do this, hear this, discuss this. Yeah, really appreciate all of your time and effort, um, delivering this presentation to us.
Well, thank you, and we appreciate you guys inviting us.
All right, so I'm going to thank you. Uh, I am going to, um, move us to our second opportunity for public comment. Uh, so this is the second opportunity for individuals to speak for up to three minutes on any issue. Speaker remotely press star nine or use the raise hand feature in Zoom. I'm not going to read all of this again. City staff will identify colors by the last three digits of their phone number or name for Zoom. If anyone, we have three attendees. I don't know who you are, but if any of you have, would like to make a public comment, now is the time. I don't see any hands raised. So, um, our last item, and I know we don't have to take motions for this or anything like that, but it's adjournment. So thank you all for a really great discussion tonight and we'll see you whenever the next time is, not next week. Bye.
Take care. Happy holidays.
You too. Thank you.